We'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Solfa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Saron?
And vocalsinger?
Here.
We have thirteen out of fourteen.
All right, thank you. Item number two is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone. If you come up to use the podium to speak tonight, make sure you can hear yourself in the background here so that everybody online and in the broadcast can hear you. Next, item three is items to be removed, added or changed. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay. Move right on then to matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody's here or online for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Okay, no hands. Okay, we will move then right on to item number five, discussion on the Mahoney Creek Basin.
Hello. Um, there we go. Let's see. How do we make this full screen like that? There we go. Okay, so, do you wanna?
Sure, I guess we've, most of us on the council have received at least one, maybe more complaints about what we've had done out there when we did the water retention work and the rebuild of that area out there along Kirk Road. That mainly the complaint that I've heard is that now that we've removed all of what was untouched for thirty years, it's now more open and you can see the road here, the road, and people don't like it. So basically, I think that's what we're here to discuss tonight.
Yeah, so I put together this exhibit just to show mainly where any areas along the tributary and then after the mainline and tributary converge, where we had either experienced firsthand or had gotten calls from residents where there had been either flooding and/or extreme erosion along these banks. One of, or actually, two areas are owned by the park district and every time we'd get, actually, three. They'd have excessive cleanup with some flooding and they'd have portions of their bike path closed and then all the debris pickup. One of the residents on Marshall Court spent in excess of fifty thousand dollars of their own money to hard armor the bank where it takes this ninety-degree turn right here. And there have been, you know, quite a few times where residents along this creek had flooded and had extensive damage to their home, meaning, you know, having to pay out of pocket and for all of that damage, both in their yard and in their home. So when this property became available, we started looking at options and going forward with the project. But this map shows approximately like fifty-four parcels that have been affected by flooding and erosion. The total project cost from all the studies that we had done dating back to two thousand and eighteen all the way through construction, total eight hundred thousand dollars. And we purchased the property when it was for sale. And as you had mentioned, Alan, there was really no maintenance done on the property either. So there was a lot of scrub trees. We went in there along the stream bank just to clear so we can get in there and access it and remove some of the scrub. And then it would have, you know, there were trees that had, just were in poor condition that were not really sustainable to stay up. So it definitely was a shock to have them removed. But the benefit is that all of these properties see less water coming through their property. There was nothing holding it back for a mile stretch of Kirk Road, which is in this section from Wilson Street to Pine Street where the Fermi entrance is, is approximately a mile and it's four lanes. And it has, as I'm sure most of you are aware, it goes down into this valley where the creek is. So the water flows pretty quickly as well, not like a flat road that the water takes a little bit longer. So when we get those heavy, heavy rainstorms, which have been happening more frequently, it'd be really flashy and that would cause a lot of that erosion through that area. So with that, I know we had discussions when this project was being let and even under construction and we pushed the trees a little bit closer together that we put in the arbor viety and we decided, or I guess I should say the council decided that we wanted to just stick with natural plantings as opposed to doing a fence, which would take long or have long-term maintenance costs associated with it. And smushed, I guess, and placed the trees a little bit closer than what we had proposed and still allow them to grow fully to their mature growth and width without overcrowding and potentially choking them. So right now, they are just in that establishment stage. And hopefully, within the next two to three years, those trees will start growing fairly rapidly. But right now, it is a little bit less dense than what has previously been there.
Andrea, in addition to putting the trees closer, we also added more trees there, too.
We did, yes, with that.
I think we took it from fifty-something to over eighty. Eighty-five, yeah.
So I guess off the bat, I guess I'll let the two aldermen that are in that ward, if you want to address anything that you've heard already or anything you want to say upfront on this.
I just want, and I'm pretty sure how many parcels are affected total with this project in terms of the remediation and the parcels up along the tributary?
Just that what we're aware of is about fifty-four.
Those are ones that experienced flooding?
Flooding and severe erosion where once you're on, or once your property erodes, you may not replace it. So it's lost in that, you know, there's some people like down here that are by Manchester, that they have half of their property is street side and then the creek intersects it. And then they have the other side and they have bridges and the foundations get eroded away too with that. And they have to go through the core to get permits, which costs a lot of money as well as time. So there's a whole different variety of issues that arose from this rapid flashing water.
With regards to, sorry Andrea, with regards to parcels that are affected, you all know that we've been studying Mahoney Creek as a whole and are ultimately going to be seeking grant funding for improvements along Mahoney Creek. And again, as part of the overall improvements to Mahoney Creek, the main channel is mapped today, but the tributary is not mapped. So as part of the overall improvements and grant funding process would be to ultimately map the tributary. And by doing this project now, before, or had we mapped it without doing this project, there very well could be homes, multiple homes in the floodplain. And by doing this project, we've mitigated that floodplain area so that now when we do map it, there's very likely going to be homes that would have been in the floodplain who won't be in the floodplain. And that's a critical thing from your own homeowner's flood insurance.
So this project then is probably helping out over eighty properties in the long run?
I don't know that I would, for sure, we know the fifty-four.
Right.
And I know there's others out there.
Okay. So at least fifty-four, but more.
Yeah, because I guess the one thing that I always, you know, envisioned in this was that the fact that it was not just about the end of that street and the sightlines to Kirk Road or the sound deadening to Kirk Road. It was about the entire project. And it was about the benefit and the problems that we've seen throughout that tributary that needed to be addressed, you know, and that we've over years have constantly had flooding out there. And that's what this was to mitigate. We knew that, you know, we weren't planting twenty-foot trees in there to start with and it would take time for them to grow, to fill in and, you know, develop somewhat of a barrier there.
Yes, I agree. And we did that watershed plan. So as Gary said, there's future projects that we'll look at, that this area was also identified as well.
Do you want to say anything?
No, I mean, I've had the same complaints as Chris. You know, as mentioned, this was just one project for, that goes into a larger project, project to address the flooding. And that's really the biggest concern is addressing the flooding along the entire tributary and Mahoney Creek for all of our residents.
Okay. Does anybody online want to say anything? If that's a smaller group, I'll do that first. If you do, just raise your hand if you would like to say anything online. Okay, now I know we've got a bunch of residents here that I'm sure would like to talk and say something tonight, because we do have quite a few things on our agenda tonight. We're going to try to limit just to a couple of minutes. So I don't know if you guys have already talked about having one or two people come up to really voice your concerns. If that's true, or if not, just try to limit it to a couple of minutes, please.
I have a couple of people.
Sure, that's fine.
My name is Mike Schaafen. I live at thirteen thirty-eight Winter Green Terrace. No one has ever questioned the need for this project. I've lived here for about thirty years. The creek that used to be alongside the east side of my property, I've seen it flood over probably three or four times. Mike O'Brien, who used to be an alderman, helped him clean out his basement a couple of times because of the flooding. So I don't think anybody here is questioning the need for the project. Quite honestly, it's about thirty years overdue. But our whole concern is just the amount of noise and the loss of property value. We put a survey out on an app called Nextdoor. I just kind of did them randomly. Out of the thirty-five people that responded, about twenty of them said that they noticed an increased level of noise. You've also changed wind direction. If you change wind intensity, you know, you took down about a hundred and twenty to two hundred and twenty feet of forest, it was thirty to forty feet tall. So you have changed the wind direction in the area. But I think as a group here, I'm not speaking for the group and I'm just the loudest voice. We're just unhappy with the amount of noise that we get. You know, a number of times during the, I think it was February first Committee of the Whole, you said you guys would look at this again. And thank you very much for letting us come up here and talk. You know, when you guys scheduled the ribbon cutting for September thirteenth and I got the thing in the mail, I thought it was a joke. I mean, really, as many people that had complained to the city about the amount of noise, you guys were going to do a ribbon cutting at the peak of traffic on five-thirty on a Tuesday afternoon. Of course, we were upset. I don't know why you guys were surprised. You know, what we see is just an increased level of noise and we'd like something to be done about it. And the loss of property value, you can't sit on your patio at night or in the afternoon in the summer. The trucks and everything, you just, it's hard to hear somebody. And I think there's some other people that like to say something. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really quick. So Zach Hoffman, I live at thirteen eighteen Astor Court, right where that bend in the creek is. You know, when I moved here seven years ago, that land was owned by a person. So we never thought it was going to get developed. I partially chose the house because it was, you know, there was a buffer zone between my house and the road. But when it was knocked down, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty bad. But I want to add on, not just to the noise, I mean, we have to put, I'm not the only neighbor that has had to put light-blocking curtains in my room all night long. I mean, in my house, it's just lights, lights. And, you know, we have that little speed sign there, but it's only encouraged people to drive faster. So I get to see that shit blinking all night when people drive by at extreme speeds. It's just really annoying. But I'm, I've already talked to a realtor, but I'm pretty, pretty depressed about what happened. You know, I tried to, I tried to take pictures and kind of show what my yard looked like. We weren't really listened to and we said that a fence would only mitigate noise for some neighbors because I'm way lower than where the road is, which, you know, a couple other folks here can attest to, they're in the same situation. So the road noise is just incredible. So I would love to see some more trees planted there. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Probably don't need the mic. I'm fairly loud. I live at thirteen twenty-nine Violet Lane and I was not going to get up. But we had to listen to the engineer in the beginning and I wanted to say a few interactions that I had with the engineer over this whole project. There were supposed to be approximately thirty large trees left on this project not cut down. All of a sudden, I came back from Wisconsin and the largest one, which was right on my end, is gone. I was appalled. I walked up to the engineer and I said, what happened? She goes, ah, it happens. That was her whole answer to losing thirty full-grown trees that were supposed to stay. We need more trees put in in that section. We're not, we're not saying that we shouldn't have had this done. We knew it needed to be done, but you guys dropped the ball completely. And the sound mitigation, the wind, I have a pool in my backyard. I've had it for about twenty years. I've never had the pool so dirty because I've got the road dust coming off with the wind and dumping in the pool. I'm a working man. I'm a retired fireman from Oak Park. I know the mayor because he used to come and visit us. I can't afford it. I spent six thousand dollars putting in trees now that are going to take another ten years to block it at all. We need a lot more trees put in there. That's what we'd like, or that's what I'd like. Half of my yard has gone from a beautiful forest to a drainage ditch. Don't call it a creek. Don't call it, don't sugarcoat it. It's a cesspool ditch. Thank you, sorry.
Hi, my name's Jeff Beckley. I live on Blue Bell Lane, so I'm at the extreme northern end. I have two lots. One's, one's a buildable lot, probably not buildable today because I wouldn't put a house on it. But my concern, I like to raise is a little different and it's about resale values. So I'm a former real estate broker, so that's the stuff that interests me. If you take a look at a house that's fronting Kirk and you take a look at a house that's not fronting, in the same vicinity, how many people think that the house fronting Kirk is worth more than the other one? Anybody? You're damn right, it's not. It's thirty-seven dollars a square foot less. So these houses here now, if I have a two thousand square foot ranch house, thirty-seven dollars a square foot, that's seventy-five grand value, gone. All these properties here, over a half, is basically five hundred thousand dollars worth of real estate values, gone. So the town has responsibility to take care of the homeowners, all the homeowners. Sorry, Mr. Home, it's not winner takes all for majority. So this has cost us money. It's cost us private enjoyment of our properties and so on. And it didn't have to happen this way. A sound mitigation, a wall could be put up. I know maintenance. Well, you plant trees, you do the wall, the wall falls down eventually and the trees take over. It's as simple as that. So don't do a project unless you're going to do it right. And this one wasn't done, done right. I spent my career in multinational companies working on capital projects. Any project that starts with a budget says this is as much as we have to spend, guarantee it's not going to get done right. And this is a partial project. It's not complete and it's not, certainly not done to the satisfaction of homeowners and the impact right now. And this is just the homes that are right there on the border. The other ones that have now sound that is permeating their house, one house over, two house over, also reduction in value. So five hundred thousand dollars, I can come up with rail like that. The other ones is more as well. So there's probably over a million dollars worth of real estate values that has been consumed by this project. And that's something you need to think about in when your next move. This is, this project isn't done yet. Thank you.
Thirteen thirty-nine Winter Green Terrace. I've been there for about twelve years. I've been in the neighborhood overall for about seventeen years. I just echo pretty much everything that everybody said here tonight. I'm one of the very, you know, central houses in this project. The elbow that you're talking about right there, that's what hits my house. So every year, I couldn't figure out the grass glowed a little yellow from salt coming probably and just hit in that bank. And I agree that something had to be done about it, but you know, it was right next to my house the whole time. It never got cleaned. There was trash in there all the time. Trash, branches, everything. So it was never cleaned out or maintained properly, in my opinion. You know, I got little videos I could show, but in, in my bathroom, I put a window so I could look at my yard and everything like that the year before this happened. Now, at five in the morning, I can open my window and on a rainy day, it's just blaring. I close it, not too much. Open it, it's blaring. Same thing with the lights. The lights are constantly flashing, constantly flashing my house in the front and the back. You know, the noise is pretty consistent when motorcycles are flying by or semi trucks are going by, you know, heavy traffic hours, those are usually, usually when we notice it the most, obviously. But it's, it's just disappointing. I agree that I don't think the project should be completed. You know, I can, I can be patient and wait for something to grow a little while. And we understand that other people in the community have needs, but we don't feel like our needs are being met currently. So we'd appreciate it if something more could be done to remedy our situation now. Because now we're the ones that are kind of having, you know, some issues with the things going on. It's not as damaging as flooding, but it was also mentioned that we've had a big hit on our property value as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be quick. This is Quinton Healy. I'm thirteen sixteen Astor Court. I'm one house over from Zach. So I'm not directly impacted by the lights, but I can tell you that wind change and the sound is drastically increased. When I have friends and family come over for swimming in our pool, I've often been, it's often been commented like, wow, I can't believe you guys are only five hundred feet away from Kirk Road and you cannot hear them. Occasionally, you hear a motorcycle or a semi that's doing engine braking, but you can't hear them. Now, you literally cannot talk during, you know, some two motorcycles go down the street. You can't talk until they're out of the way. So it's drastically increased. And from my viewpoint from the, from my house, the trees aren't going to affect a whole lot because of where the culvert's at. So I will forever be able to see Kirk Road and like Wilson Hall because of where the culvert's at. So it's, I'm just hoping for a little bit of improvements that could help with sound and light and wind, even if it's temporary for a couple of years, like somebody had mentioned, putting a sound barrier in temporarily and then let the trees take over. That's, that's what I'm looking for from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? I guess that's now time for us to discuss what we think we should do with this. I mean, I've driven out there and looked at it. I've stopped and listened and yes, I would say it's noisy. I guess my first impression is, I bought a house near Kirk Road, I would know it's going to be noisy whether there's trees there or not. So, I mean, it's.
Not at all. That's not, that's not at all.
Okay, can't all talk at once.
In fact, you can only approach the microphone because it's being televised. So that way, and it's being recorded.
And, you know, that, that's my impression of it. I'm not saying that that's not yours. You live there. You've lived there for thirty years, some of you, so you know. The reality is, I think at this point, we'll have to decide, do we want to put more trees out there? Do we want to try to do something different out there to try to mitigate the sound? I mean, we knew right off the bat, or at least I felt right off the bat when we looked at the original plan and we had the input that we had from you that we had to do something different and that's why we added what we added. And obviously, not enough, because you wouldn't be here. So I think it, you know, it's incumbent on us to look at it again and find out what we think we could do with it. I don't know if a temporary fence to go out there is really what needs to happen, or do we look at it and or do we look at it and say, "What kind of planning changes could we make that would eventually grow into a barrier or sound, you know, mitigation for that area?"
I just don't think that you can, you know, sit there and say, "Oh, well, I'd expect to hear some noise." We're telling you, there was very minimal noise compared to what there is now. Now, so you're, you're, if you bought a house next to Kirk Road, say my house, and there was no trees there, sure, you'd expect to hear a lot of noise, and you'd go into the, you know, you'd go into it buying that house knowing that there'd be a lot of noise. But we had a barrier, and we were protected from a lot of that noise, and now we're not. And, and visual effect, all that stuff.
And that's why I'm...
That's why you're concerned. But it just seems like your retort was like, "Oh, well, you should have known." It's, it's, it feels kind of insulting.
I'm not, I'm not trying to insult you.
Well, we, we feel like it's just like, "Oh, well, you should have known." It's just what I'm, I felt kind of offended by it.
I invite all you to my house, 1329 Violet Lane, to come and, and see. I used to be able to have a cup of coffee in the kitchen, now it's too loud, you can't hear it, can't do it. Alanette was a terrible thing to say. Those thousands of little trees that were cut down, they, they did sound mitigation year round. They did more in the summer, but in the winter, those little sticks there, everything that she called scrub, made that look beautiful over there, and we all liked it over there. Now you've taken it away. Now we're telling you, we want something done, we want more trees planted.
And that's where I'm going.
Well, please come over to my house sometime, I'll, 1329 Violet Lane, and, and you can walk the yard, we can walk there together, or let's get a committee together to study this together with some of us and some of you. Because it's obvious we didn't have any input into this in front. We should have planted all the trees out by the road. That would have slowed the sound down instead of close to our house. The sound travels down a gully, and it just bounces off of our houses now. If it had been higher by the road, it would have slowed it down up by the road.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I, I don't know if the trees would last up there. I, you know, I'm not an arborist, so I don't know what belongs where as far as the trees. And I'll agree with you that in the places that I've been where there are buffers at the end of the streets, yes, it's completely different than it is right where this project is. I'll agree with you that that has changed drastically.
I had a long talk with the ecologist on this project, I think that's what she was called. She said, "We did nothing to slow down anything. It's just a minor thing that the village or the city of Batavia did by planting some trees." And you brought up a fact where we got extra trees? I live on the south end of that. There were no extra trees, you spread out the distance of the trees.
No, it's, we had fifty-seven, and there are now eighty-five. So the difference between fifty-seven and eighty-five...
You put none on the south end, you just spread them out.
So the original plan had fifty trees?
The original plan had none on the south end.
And then you came in and wanted more trees, and so we planted more trees. That's what happened.
The original plan had none on the south end. You added six or seven trees, but you spread them out. Come to my house, Alan, and I'll show you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary, do you want to...
I would just like to comment on the ability for the residents to provide input to this project during the design process. If you recall, we had mailings that went out to all the residents to make them aware. This project was discussed before committee on more than one occasion, and we also then brought this project back during the bid process and immediately after the start of construction when the trees came down, to talk with the re- the residents have had numerous opportunities, and, and we're here tonight to continue the...
And we've had contact with them many times before. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, that we solved every question that they had, but we've had lots of comment from the residents.
Um, just for point of reference for everyone in the room, we did obtain a cost estimate, our cost, at the time of bidding for a fence, and council had decided not to go forward with the fence. At that time, the cost was $120,000. And then also, one other point, there's a reliance upon this wooded parcel, but I think it's important to stress that the wooded parcel wasn't a forest preserve. It was privately owned land, and the private property owner could have at any time gone out and taken down all the trees, because the city does not have a tree preservation ordinance. There's nothing from stopping that property owner from taking down the trees. And so, yeah, the city ended up acquiring that property for stormwater.
And we had a very similar in situation along Randall Road where there was a buffer that was left untouched for thirty years, and then when it was developed, it's now wide open to Randall Road. So almost identical situation. It's got a retention pond all the way down along behind it.
I'd like to find out where you guys sent out those mailings, because I never got any. I maybe got one maybe a year before this project, but we didn't get anything during the project, before the project, or any time during the project. We sent letters to the city, sent an email to the city asking about just the amount of noise. We were told we, the city council would be informed, and I don't think that ever happened.
Well, we have been informed. I mean, we have, we have discussed this, and I know that we've been here...
But we never got any surveys. That's, that's kind of, I have to take homage to that, or not homage. We never got any kind of question or survey or anything like that. Got a survey this week about the city, but nothing before.
Just going to add one quick thing. You know, Gary, we did, we did voice our opinion, and I even gave you guys a PowerPoint with all the pretty pictures of my yard and what it looked like. And we asked repetitively for a noise baseline to be done before the, the kicking off of the project, just to see what the noise would have been like at its normal level. But you guys refused to take that, just to take a sound check. And so now we're sitting here looking like idiots, saying it's louder, and of course, you can just say, "Oh, it's not louder." Well, yeah, it is louder, especially if, if you live there, you'd know. But, you know, we asked for that baseline, and I, I feel like we were kind of steamrolled on that, so...
I, I don't think anybody's denying that it's louder.
So I, I was the one that specifically asked for a baseline study to be done. I also have a property right next to me that is not developed. It's still the original lot, it's on, on cul-de-sac. I can take measurements there, and I can tell you that, that, that there's easily six to eight decibels that, that, that gain in, in, in these lots from measuring, even in the wintertime, with trees that are bare. Six, eight decibels difference between standing there with my meter. By the way, my meter, somebody complained about it, it'd take $100,000 to do a study, $30, Amazon, you know, gets you some quick information. Six, eight decibels, standing at the Hoffman versus, versus my lot. Ten decibels is twice as loud. It's a logarithmic scale. So at the time, I asked for a one log reduction. Mr. Home probably remembers that, and that was a, but that, that was the, that was my expectation is, is if you look into the studies, that depth of forest provides one log reduction. And that's exactly what we're seeing. Twice as loud for, for the homeowners there. That lot, and I looked into buying that lot, by the way, you guys beat me out, but I looked into buying that lot. I, I was told that that pie-shaped area, and it's, and it's, you can, you can pull up the zoning maps today, zoned for residential, low-density residential. I don't know how a detention pond qualifies for a low, low density residential, but that, that, there was homogeneity to that whole area. It was all residential. So saying that, we should have expected that something was going to happen on Kirk Road, and, and too bad for you, it's like me sitting there saying there's fifty-four lots that built on a moving stream, and tough crap for you because you couldn't have figured out it was going to flood? It's the same argument. You can't get away with, you know, using that particular thing and saying, "Hey, you know, caveat emptor here for buying that lot." It was, it was a homogeneous lot, all residential. Yeah, they could have, they could have cut the, that down, but there was, there was no purpose to that. You couldn't build on those lots. There was no ability to build a residential home. I called and checked, and that's what I was told. So there's no reason for us to expect that that lot was, was going to get cut down like that, because it was an unbuilt zone residential low-density. Still is today, you can, you can pull up the map. Still has the same look, is the exact same look that, that, that when I looked at it when I bought my home twelve, twelve years ago.
I would like to respond regarding that lot. When this subdivision was plotted, the city was supposed to get that lot originally. It was, I think, within two days that it got dated to the owner of the still left unbuilt lot on Blue Bell Court. So originally, it was always supposed to be part of a detention area. There was a detention pond at the north end of the lot for that subdivision that fed into the creek. So when it became available, the city wanted to get it back into the, as I guess I would say, where the correct hands, where it was supposed to be all along. So that is something that was unfortunate, and we, none of us were working here at the time when that happened, but we happened to run across that, and the lot already had detention on it, and we thought we would, with all the issues that we had going on in that area, be able to increase that storage volume and put that there. So I did just want to mention that to you guys.
Well, I, I think to try to bring this tonight to some kind of resolution here, I think what I'd like to propose is that we have staff come up with some additional plan for some type of mitigation along that area, whether it be along Kirk Road or along the, the tree line that's out there now, the berm that's out there now, as far as what would be the next step, the next logical step to either enhance what's there or change what we have there. And, you know, I don't know if we want to give them a month and then have them come back to a call meeting. We'll notify everybody, make sure that you know that we're going to meet again and talk about this and decide what we're going to do with that. Because obviously, it's not right for you. And, you know, that's not, that was not part of our intent to do that. Our intent was to, you know, rectify other issues as well as utilize that property for retention. So I think that's where I think I'd like to see us go with this, so we can come up with some idea and then decide what to do with it. Dan?
So a couple of things. First, I, I've worked with you for, for quite a while. I would say, I would characterize your defense of property owners to be very high. You spent zero time defending yourself. Let me defend you for a split second. You absolutely care about sound levels and whatnot, so I just want to let you know that. I know that you do care. I also know that you do care about the budget. $50 is what a sapling costs. The trees that they would like are $4,000 trees. We can get eighty $50 trees for, for...
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm, I'm trying to defend you here. Fifty, trying to build, trying to build a budget for you, actually, if you let me finish. Thank you. Where was I? Eighty trees, $50, around $4,000, but they really want $4,000 trees, because this should be one of the last meetings we have about this. I want to make sure that we do this right. Eighty $4,000 trees is $320,000, which is twice as much as a fence that we just talked about. We don't want a fence.
That's why I want to have the option.
And the end result is still subjective.
Right.
We are still going to have five people come back here and say, "I can see lights and I can hear noise. You did nothing for me. You wasted everyone's time." I, I know that we're going to get that, that argument, come back here, so what, what, what do we define success as here? Because I don't want to spend another $300,000 on trees and that's, you know, fix the problem, because we're not, we're still not going to do it. The fast-forward button on time is what fixes this problem. And unless you're a homeowner selling their house in the next thirty-six months, this is a, this is a temporary, on paper loss, which it's unfortunate, yeah, but I'm not selling my house right now. I'm, I'm okay with the little dip that happened for the trees that are missing in my neighborhood. We knocked down some very large trees, and I've got some noise coming on my property, but I've apparently bought my dream townhouse, so I'm going to be there for a little while. And they planted some $50 saplings, it'll be there in twenty years, because that's all we can afford to do in, in my townhouse. So I mean, I, I get it, but we, we also have to set the expectation properly here. So we're not waving a magic wand, but we, are we buying $4,000 trees? Or are we buying a mix? And where do we put them? And that's the direction we should give staff. That's all.
Abby?
Yeah, and...
Excuse me, we're, we're going to have a discussion here amongst us, and let's talk in a minute.
A question, if something like this has ever been done, but to your point about it being subjective, and house by house has different issues. A fence isn't going to help one property owner. It would help some property owners over here. Light is coming from this angle, we might plant a tree over here. So in addition to having a discussion about an increased budget and locations for some generic plantings, would there be a pot of money set aside for like a, I'm not saying on private property, but outside of, on our property here, outside of theirs, for them to say, "The light is coming from right there to this window, and a tree right there would help solve it." And so we're not going in as like...
Sure.
To allow for an application process, a visit, be like, "Yeah, tree right there, tree this size." Maybe it's not a $4,000 tree, maybe at this point, a $2,000 tree would get just right.
So I'm really glad you say that, because I have, immediately behind my house, I look out on this amazing pile of scrub. And as the mayor says, we need to get that scrub out of the King County Forest Preserve, because there's a tinderbox behind my house. When they clear all that scrub out, I'm going to get all that noise from the corner of Fabian and Randall Road, and I know exactly where I would put trees. The idea is, is really, that's a good idea.
Chris?
I'm just aware this is in my ward, and we also have to worry about, we're talking about budget, as, as Dan has brought up. As soon as, let's say that they decide you want to do a fence, as soon as they build a fence, where's it going to stop? Because I'm going to have twenty-five more people to my south going to be sending me emails saying, "Why the heck do they get one?"
And they're actually closer to...
And they're, they are on top of the road. My sister lives on top of the road down there off Hillsboro.
Yep.
So I mean, we just have a slippery slope situation where we have to keep in mind that I don't think you're going to, I mean, I don't, that's why I don't think a fence is even an option at all. Because that's just going to have, you're going to have residents to the north and south who are going to start emailing two of us asking for fences.
To me, the more natural it is, the better off it is, especially moving forward.
There are a lot of those sound barrier fences that I've driven by, and I actually had the pleasure of driving past one north of Palatine, and, for three days in a row, twice a day. And they've been hit, they've been destroyed. And the question is, when you put those up, who's going to be responsible for maintaining those? That is something that is definitely not in our budget to be able to take care of. Even the ones on 94, the concrete ones, you drive by, because, you know, you put those up and they become the, "Oh, let's see how quickly we can run through them. It's, it could be the safest area." So, yeah, I've never been a fan of a fence. I prefer the natural, and we've put trees in there, and I don't know, I, I worry about if we try to put trees in there, are we going to, the trees that we've already invested and put in there, are we going to do damage to that? You know, it, it's one of those things, we have to give it some time to grow and to mature what we've invested and put it in there. And that was one reason why we had requested more trees to be put in.
Abby?
And just as kind of an aside to one of Gary's points, I think we should have a tree preservation ordinance, and then also find it kind of problematic, you know, if there were thirty trees that could have been saved and weren't saved, that's disappointing too, and could have helped.
I guess I want to ask one more time, just to make sure staff is okay with us, putting like a month timeframe on this, can you get something back to us? I don't know if you want to...
That's too quick. We probably want to have a consultant on board for...
Okay. Is it, would it be the same? Because we had somebody out there before we did this, right? And laying out the landscaping plan and everything. Can we talk, go back to them, talk to them about...
We certainly can.
What, what things would be acceptable to plant within that or around that so that we're not competing with the things we've already put out there, and that would also work well with them? You know, because I know some stuff doesn't grow well together.
Right. So we certainly can, but again, we don't have a contract with that firm right now, so even, even just going through the committee and council approval process to get a contract's going to take thirty days. So it is going to be, timing-wise, it's going to be a lot longer than that before we would come back to you with options that were...
And whenever we can plant them, if we can, if we decide to do something, we would have...
Well, one of the things I would like clarification on is it was mentioned that staff could work with a consultant to come up with another plan. My worry there is that, as Abby pointed out, that it won't be sufficient for what the group of homeowners... out, that it won't be sufficient for what the group of homeowners want. So, you know, it was also suggested that we just see what the homeowners want, go house by house with, and I don't know for which one of those homes, and to develop independent plans for what would meet their satisfaction. Now, I also think that that is a slippery slope. So on all future projects, are we going to conduct a house by house study to determine whether the adjacent homeowner is fully satisfied with what their view is, how the light hits their house, what the sound is? We're, we're creating a precedent.
Yeah, that, that would, I think that would end up never getting done.
Gary, in terms of our, the prior firm that did this and the consultant we worked with, are they able to give us maybe like a timeframe or timetable of how long they think it might take for everything to kind of, uh?
Grow in?
Up and grow in? I mean, so we can at least get that.
That is their profession. So I'm assuming the answer to that would be yes.
Since they've already done the work, maybe they can just kind of give us some information in that regard and maybe a mockup of how they think it would be. Because I have seen, even right on the property, when I'm, when I drove by it the other day, there are some giant green arborvitae's that are in a row that go east, west, that are right there, which kind of give an example of how it hopefully would look eventually. But I'm not sure if that's, if they're planted the same way or not.
And again, that's, that's their profession. So we certainly can get that from them.
I know the ones that I have took about 10 years to get to the 12 foot that I wanted along the border of my property to be my fence, the natural fence I have with arborvitae.
Would it speed up the process to go back to the same consultant, amend the contract and say, can you just tell us, what, what would it take to get to the fast forward running of like five years? Not maybe 12 foot trees? Let's get some eight foot trees in there so we can just speed it up a little bit. I can't imagine that that would be expensive to them in that contract. Only from a perspective, Alderman, that this work isn't budgeted this year. So we need to come back to city council for approval to do it. So it's not going to speed up the process from a contractual standpoint.
And in terms of other precedent, we have a 50/50 tree program already for people
that want trees on their property. This is an extension of that. It's just in their backyard, not.
I've done it.
Yeah, it's not a slippery slope. It is, we want trees, so let's.
And that may be something where we would come back to the property owners that are adjacent to that and find out, you know, if you really want a, a different tree or a bigger tree and it fits within whatever will work out there. If you want it and you want to pay half of it, we'll put it in. You know, I mean, I, I think that's also something that we can do to try to make this work, to get this done, you know, and make an improvement out there that, you know, will hopefully satisfy people that, you know, we are trying to do this. We're not just going to go out and scorched earth, do a project and then leave it and walk away from it and say, sorry. That's, that's not what we're here for.
So we will proceed forward.
Okay.
That, that, that is, we have the direction.
Okay.
We're not going to not proceed forward.
Okay.
Just the physical time of the process sometimes.
And then we'll make sure that we notify that group, you know, I don't know if you have an email group.
When we're ready to bring back recommendations to city council.
We'll make sure that we notify you and if we have to, we'll rely on two aldermen to help me make sure everybody gets notified that we're going to do this and talk about it again. But we will, you know, as soon as we have an answer of what we think are options for that, then we'll, we'll come back to you.
Gary, does Andrea have everybody's email from that group from when we did the presentation on Mahoney Creek back in 2020? Okay. If you could just confirm with the people that are here, just to make sure that we do still have their correct email address, that would be great.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to say? We can wrap this one up. Do you understand where we're, where we think we're going with this? So we can try to figure a way to do something out there, try to make it better than it is, because I don't want to leave it like that. I don't want, I don't care if it's three people or 50 people. I don't want people upset with something that we're doing to try to help other people.
The only thing that I want to say really, like, what I was hearing is that, you know, mostly what he talks about was a $4,000 trees and $320,000 budget. And she ended up getting all the way to humongous walls at 294, whatever. Like, I don't, I don't need all that either. And I understand that time will heal it, you know, I'm realistic. But from the point that we're at now, time won't heal it. Not enough there. It's not going to grow in and fill out nearly what was there. You know, so I would appreciate, and I appreciate you guys hearing us, just to, you know, I'm happy with whatever, $50 saplings, just something in there to get the process.
Well, and again, we, we want to do it so that.
It's fine, but there's something cheaper than $4,000.
A $50 tree is not going to make anybody happy. It's not.
So I'm just.
You guys need some, you guys need some big trees.
You're going 4,000, I'm going 50. Maybe we can end up in the middle.
And one of your neighbors, one of your neighbors set a wall, to build a wall and let the wall fall down. So that's why I went to the wall portion of it.
Well, yeah, and then we got, you know, we're using expensive examples, of course, because you guys think we want the world. At least in my perspective, I just want to see something grow in there. And it feels very sparse right now, you know?
And we knew that when the project went on.
And it really is an echo chamber. So I'm hoping that everything grows then because it's really disgusting to look at it.
I'm just saying a couple of $50 trees aren't going to cut it. You want some, you know, eight foot trees in there. You gotta, you gotta get some good trees in there.
I'm going to appreciate, you know, a little more serious discussion about it. You know, like I said, we don't need to be on the extreemend.
And none of those are experts. So that's why we're, to get a plan back.
I just think we'd all be happy with the same trees you planted, just more of them closer to the road because it's way higher at the road. If you planted the same sized trees, I don't think.
I'm not sure they'll survive with the salt.
They won't survive out there. That's what we, they won't survive out there is what we were told because of the traffic and the salt and everything else.
You have 30 or 40 feet there and you have trees all up and down the road there that are surviving.
What, what, what grew there quickly were invasive species that have nobody's being there. We don't want, we don't want to replicate that.
Before and after the ditch, you have trees going there. I, I granted, some of them do die from time to time, but you have 30 feet off the road. You have a sidewalk there. If you planted everything to the west of the sidewalk, which is east of the ditch, I look at this every morning and go, what can we do to make this better? I planted $6,000 worth of trees in my yard. I had no idea we have a 50/50. So I'm going to be asking, who do I talk?
That's for Parkway, that's a Parkway program. So if it's adjacent to your property, well, if it's adjacent to your property and it would be a 50/50 program. And the reason we brought it up is because that could be a way where we could add more to it if the adjacent residents want to have a different tree, more trees in there that we could figure a way to apply that to the city's property because the Parkway belongs to the city.
Well, that is the Parkway.
Right. Correct.
Is Eastman included in that? Because of the power line?
I, I would have to find out. Yeah.
I, I just didn't like a few things saying that we won't be satisfied. We're just asking for a little more. And I, I appreciate it, Dan, if that's what you were trying to say.
I probably articulated it wrong too. I'm just saying you do not want us to go in and throw some invasive species. We just spent all this money trying to tear out, we want to do, we want to do it right.
The same thing that was there, if you put them out farther in a higher location, it's going to take 12 feet of tree before.
We will have the consultant consider putting them closer to the road. We'll, we'll bring that up to the consultant and see what they say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Quentin, your last.
Just a quick comment. I'm looking for better communication and letting us know where you are instead of waiting until you get a final report and then having us be alarmed or, odds are, setting expectations is going to be important for me. So understanding, we're not going to make everybody happy, but I don't feel like we were brought in to set expectations ahead of time. If I'd have known two years ago that this is going to be totally evacuated with all trees, my expectations would have been horrible and I'd, I'd have been a little bit more adamant about getting involved with this process. So letting us get involved with just this process, what are our expectations? So you understand from each homeowner, maybe a little subcommittee, maybe a little chance to sit down and talk about this stuff. So we can communicate before we see a report and go, that's not what we're looking for. Because that, to me, that's, you know, we've done a lot of communications on email between all of us and I wasn't even aware of some of the things that were going on. So us communicating internally helped us kind of understand where we could discuss with you guys. And that's what I'm looking for, from you guys, is to help us get involved before we have some kind of official statement and find, you know, I don't want to spend $400,000 on, on something. But I also don't want to find out, yeah, hey, we're going to give you all shades for your windows.
Well, here's what I understood the project to be. Andrea, your email, because there was a presentation in 2020 online during COVID. So it's important that she has your email to confirm that she does have the correct email on, on site for you.
And to set expectations, what the city has been asked to do is work with the consultant about where to put more trees on our property to add to the buffer. Okay. So, and it'll probably be another month before we're back asking for the appropriation of the budget in order to conduct that process. And then it'll probably be another couple of months for the consultant to work on that, that project. And from that project, there will be a report and then that report will come back to council. So I would expect that it's three to four months from now when the next meeting about this will be.
Okay. And we'll make sure that we follow up and make sure that you guys are aware of it. All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll now move on to item number six, which is ordinance 2301, grant of a variance for a building canopy for the DLR group applicant at 13, or I'm sorry, 334 William Wood Lane.
Zach, I'm going to stop sharing the agenda. And if you could hit start share from within Zoom, that allows the people online to see what you've got up on the screen as well.
Yep.
Are you, I think maybe if you hit the edge, that will be the right screen. If you go back to Zoom.
Sorry, I'm having.
No problem. I can, I can help you out with it too.
It's out of the recording.
Another red one. Red one doesn't fit as.
Yeah.
Didn't have the.
All righty, I think we, we got it figured out.
Okay.
So we're going to be covering ordinance 23-01, variance for a building canopy at JB Nelson School at 334 William Wood Lane. At the January 4th public hearing, the zoning, zoning board of appeals considered a request for one variance from the zoning code for JB Nelson School. The planning commission concurrently conducted a design review for electronic changeable message sign or ECM and site improvements. Ordinance 23-01 would grant the approval for a variance to allow a building canopy to be approximately 21 feet and 10 inches closer to the property line instead of the required 30 feet front setback for buildings in the PFI zoning district. The planning commission did approve the design review for the ECM and site improvements and those were given to you in the staff report. The zoning board of appeals was supportive of the request for the variance of 21 feet and 10 inches for JB Nelson School. This primarily is due to the location of the existing school and the dedication of the public right of way years after the construction of the school. That created challenges. The school was conduct, constructed in the mid 1950s and the city actually did not dedicate William Wood Lane until the mid 1960s. So that did change the public right of way and created these setbacks and created the challenge because the school just does own property on the west side of where the school is. In this proposal, they are relocating the main entrance back to the original entrance for the school when it was originally constructed. That's primarily for security improvements to the overall school. And they feel that this building canopy will help enhance the entrance and improve security on the overall site. By a vote of six to zero, the zoning board of appeals recommended the city council approve, subject to the conditions of the requested variance as included in the draft ordinance for 23-01. The applicant is here if you have questions for them. Otherwise, I can take questions as well. And then the staff recommendation is approval of this ordinance, 23-01 as presented.
Okay. Does anybody on council have any questions or comments on this one?
So where the, the canopy is going to be, where I see in the photos here, that's going to be the new main entrance for the school?
That is correct. That will be located on the northern side of the school along William Wood Lane. From my understanding, and Carrie can speak on that, it is to extend the stacking for vehicles.
For those that are JB Nelson, live in the area, my son goes to the schools too. So it's kind of exciting to be doing this as part of the community project. But this was the original 1955 entrance into the building. So ironically, here we are moving it back. What it does allow is those that go along that street, William Wood Lane is predominantly at that section, really traversed by people that are dropping off and picking up students. They tend to drop off where they can stop and see their students enter into the main entrance now on the south side of the building. By moving this up, it helps bring that load lane up a little further to the, the northern side of the building. Plus with the interior renovations and adding, all the security related items are interior because that's what the budget could afford for the school. So we're focusing on a secured entrance vestibule and relocated administrative areas to that west side. And then that allows also reception and the principal to be able to see guests incoming and parking in that north lot much more easier than they can now because they really don't have that visibility. The administration is not even on the exterior of the building right now. They're all centrally located with a disconnected vestibule. So predominantly the project is security related. This helps by relocating the flagpole, providing the sign and the entrance canopy, but it also provides a seated wall where students can sit and, and wait for people to pick them up, provide some protection. Because if you've ever gone to that school, there is zero protection, even with the entry. It's two stories now, provides no protection from elements. So all, all meant to improve it, but also with the mid-century modern design in mind and not an ostentatious design canopy for the building. So.
I just have a question. So I read in here about they asked about the bike racks and they're just going to remain where they're currently at, at the back of the school?
There are two locations actually, just north. So like where the, the view in the center is looking, or even if you're looking at the one straight on to the left, there's a bike rack there. And then there is a rear rack in the back by the bus loop. So those will remain where they're, where they're located. Yeah.
My daughter went to JB Nelson. So I remember as kids were getting off of the bus, teachers coming out with umbrellas.
Yeah.
To get them into the school. So I was like, I'll look at a canopy for them, but it's obviously the front of the school. So. But I could definitely see where that would help with the drop off lanes with the parents. It just brings it up a little bit, you know, probably about five or six cars.
Yeah, it should, it should help. And then some of the, the spaces that Zach was talking about, the relocated ADA spaces would go to that north lot so that you'd have easier access either from the northern sidewalk or just directly to the west where you connect that lot. So.
All my kids went to JB and this looks like a lot better than what I dealt with. Mrs. Prentis constantly directing traffic.
Yes, she's, she's got it down there, but, and you know, a little bit can help. So.
Is she moving into the art room?
Art room is remaining. It's really just focused on the rooms right on either side of where the entrance is. So if you walk in and you see the library.
Oh, the music room.
Yeah, the old music room. They're all, every year they're utilized a little differently. So.
Abby?
I love the canopy and fully support that.
I love the canopy and fully support that component of this, however, and I wasn't in support of the electric changing signs when they were on Randall Road, and I have received comments from a resident nearby that, that is quite close to a number of homes. Having the flashing electric sign feels excessive and unnecessary there. And I'm trying to remember what the debate was about when we approved them the first time and what, was it that we were trying to create a buffer with residential? We were only allowing them, what zones, what, what was the debate there when we did this previously?
Yeah, that's a great question. Just to point this out, that the sign was approved through design review first, but from a zoning standpoint, most of the restrictions were, if it's within a distance of, of a residential property, there was hour restrictions. That was till, I believe, 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Staff did condition, and the planning commission did approve that condition, that these would be shut off no later than 8:00 PM or the last event of the night, and the school district, from my understanding, did agree to that. They did not have intentions to have this operating over the summertime either. It's a single-faced sign, digital sign, so that element would actually only be facing southward towards drivers that are driving northbound on William Wood Lane. So from that perspective, it is limited in hours of operation and then the zoning code does restrict things to be a static message of 15 seconds, so no animations, no, no flashing lights, and if there is illumination restrictions as well. So zoning compliance will, will be in favor of that. If there's any additional questions regarding the sign regulations, Drew or Scott are here as well, and they can answer those.
So it's really just set up to provide information to the drivers going through the lane is all it's for?
That is correct. Their intention is for the drive lane during school hours and often during the summertime is the intention of this.
We take them separately so I don't have to vote no against to the canopy.
Any other questions on the canopy?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments or anything, if you want to vote no, just explain why you're voting no, that it's the sign, not the canopy, I understand that. The, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2301, grant of a variance for a building canopy, the DLR group applicant for 334 William Wood Lane.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Zeron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Connolly?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to one.
All right, thank you. What time did you get into the meeting? I did not notice.
7:04.
7:04, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now item number seven, which is 20, ordinance 2302, amendment to a planned development for Chick-fil-A restaurant, 185 North Randall Road, Interplan LLC applicant. Drew?
Sure. Loading this up to present, presentation visible again here. Yes, so with ordinance 1129, going back, the city council did approve a planned development for the Chick-fil-A site. Chick-fil-A is now back looking to make some revisions to the site, specifically the drive-through area to add some additional capacity as well as in part to amend the planned development. And we just dealt with the canopy, but another canopy tonight to add, basically have the canopy on the north side of the building at the drive-through pickup lane to be a bit closer to the lot line. So the zoning, or the proposed action to modify ordinance 1129 with this ordinance would be to add, add that, which the planning commission did feel that the, the change was appropriate, given the landscaping, the retaining wall in that area, all things that mitigate that. You know, only by three foot, being three foot closer to that base. The main changes, as I mentioned, are adding that drive-through capacity or, you know, to address some of the traffic issues in that area that's been experienced with the increased demand in, in drive-through traffic. There would be updates to the landscape plan, updates to the lighting plan. The applicant would be adding canopy at the ordering stations, basically to provide weather cover as well as that, that other canopy. Overall, the, the planning commission was supportive of the proposed changes. They did note that some of their experiences, other locations in the area have been switching over to this format, and they did note that it did seem to help, you know, the, the overall experience. The planning commission did recommend approval of the planned development. The modifications are before you tonight. There was some conditions added for, to address lighting, to make sure it conforms to the code requirements and to allow for staff review of some of the sign changes that are contemplated but not to pick down the plans. So the planning commission did recommend approval of the design review, six to zero, and they did recommend approval of the planned development amendment just before you tonight. And staff does recommend approval of the ordinance as presented.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Yeah, kind of, I guess updates what they're trying to do out there and how they utilize the property, make it a little bit friendlier for both people in their cars and kids standing outside taking your order. Okay. Nobody has any comments? I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2302, amendment to a planned development, Chick-fil-A restaurant at 185 North Randall Road, Interplan LLC applicant.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Zeron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 14 to zero.
Okay, thank you. Up next is item eight, resolution 2318R, final plat of subdivision for the Batavia Logistics Center. Drew?
Sure. Yes, so if you recall, in October, the planning commission did review, design review approval for the southwest corner of Kirk and Fabian for a proposed industrial building. And there was a preliminary plat of approval at that time with that, that the, the city council did approve that, that preliminary plat. And now the applicant is for you with the final plat of subdivision, essentially from a, a standpoint of what the subdivision plat is doing, it is consolidating several lots that exist on the property. There'd be the creation of some new easements for signage, for transportation purposes, utilities, and for the city to have a, a sign location at the corner as well as a windmill feature. So those are all within the, the plat before you tonight. The, just to address the, the rest of that part, that the resolution does have some conditions of approval, mostly related to final approvals by both the county and the city for engineering and so forth, and making sure all of those easements will work as the final engineering review goes on and continues. The second resolution before you tonight is to create a development agreement for, between the developer and the city. If you recall, earlier this month, the city council did review and approve a intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city. That was to approve the, the access points, and there are certain responsibilities based on that agreement where, when traffic warrants are, are neat, are shown there, there may be a need for a signal. So the redevelopment agreement, or the, excuse me, the development agreement would basically create the, or what it outlines is the creation of a special service area that would be initially a backup special service area, but could be levied upon the need to fund that signal. It would be over a seven-year period and could be extended if necessary to pay off the, the true cost. It also handles what happens in certain development scenarios if the development across, you know, if the property across the street ever needed that signal during the period that this agreement is in effect. So the, and who would be responsible for what percentage of cost for that. This agreement would be in place for 20 years and staff does, or the, the planning commission did recommend approval of the final plat, six to zero as conditioned, and we do recommend staff approval of both resolutions tonight.
Hey, does anybody have any questions? This is just another step in getting that giant empty corner developed, so I look forward to this. Even if it requires a light out there, I look forward to get it, seeing it get done. One big giant building. Okay, anybody online with any questions?
Nope.
Okay. And we'll make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 23 dash 18R, final plat of subdivision for the Batavia Logistics Center.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Connolly. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Zeron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 14 to zero.
Thank you. And then the second part of this would be resolution 23 dash 19 dash R, approving a development agreement for Kirk Road traffic signal at Batavia Logistics Center subdivision. This would be the side of it between the developer and the city. Comments, questions? Make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 2319R, approving a development agreement for Kirk Road traffic signal at Batavia Logistics Center subdivision.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Connolly. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Zeron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 14 to zero.
Okay, thank you. And now up next is a discussion on the North River Street one-way conversion and authorization to proceed to bid. I think we've discussed for, is it three years now, I think in total? COVID kind of screws things up where I, how long, how long we have talked about this.
Prior to COVID, the North River Street area functioned as a traditional woo-nurf and was closed, you know, just for farmers markets essentially and their community, um, community table and a few other handful of special events. But for the most part throughout the year, it was a, was a woo-nurf with traffic and pedestrians and bicycles. Then the COVID came and, you know, again, it's been closed during the seasonal winter or seasonal summertime for the last several years. Council did direct us to go through the process of creating plans and submitting to IDOT for a conversion to one-way southbound, and we're now to that point, fingers crossed, that we're gonna get final approval from IDOT any day now. And when we get final approval, the process is gonna be going. So we, we, we have come to city council because you directed us to come back here one last time before we hit the launch button, so to speak, and start the bidding process and, and the final preparation. So we need final blessing from city council before we go forward with this project.
Yeah, move, we should go forward with this project. I, 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 I mean, we can say whatever we want about it, but I think that this is something that we've discussed, I believe enough to make our decision on. I think we've all heard the pros and cons, and there's a little bit of each on anything we do with that street. But I think overall, this gives us the most freedom as a council, as a community, to be able to utilize that street the best we can and be able to change and evolve it as we need to. Because I think it's gonna, it's not gonna remain static. I think it's gonna be something that over time does different things at different times during the year and provides different things for the city. So I think it's really important that we have control of it, and I think the overarching thing in my mind, I love to use arch, too, is, had to sneak that in there, to make sure that we have control of it and we're not held up by, I mean, look at how long it's taken us to get approval to do this from IDOT, let alone want to close it or open it or close it again. I mean, that to me just was the frustration beyond belief, that we would wait and wait and wait and say, sorry maester, you gotta wait, sorry, you know, whatever was gonna happen there, you gotta wait till we figure out whether or not we're gonna get a permit to close the street again. I mean, that's just crazy. And it makes it hard for our police department to figure out how to patrol it, it makes it hard for us to utilize it. So all those things, I think, get better with this design. And I also think that in, in a pedestrian way and utilization from pedestrian side is 100% better with us being able to do this with it. Mark has his hand up, we'll go to Mark first. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, Ellen. Yeah, I would just add that for the past few years, you've been ridiculed about having a road that says it's closed and people not knowing, well, can I go in there, can I not? You know, even from a pedestrian standpoint. So this will finally get rid of that and allow us to control it from just one end and not have to worry about putting up those barricades and creating an unwelcoming atmosphere, even though you go down there and there's a lot of people there. People from around town know that, people from outside of town don't know that that's a place that they can actually go visit. So it should fix that problem.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah, thanks, Ellen. Yeah, I, I fully support moving forward with this. I remember when we're having that, the discussion on this, and it seemed like an aha moment. I think it was actually Mark that, that first surfaced the idea of going one way would give us total control. This is a gem in our town. For us not to be able to have total control of it, I think is, would be unfortunate and then, you know, I think moving forward is the way to go with this.
Ian?
It's taken me time to change how I think of, of that piece of, of property. The arch is now a pedestrian arch, that's where pedestrians come through, it's welcoming to them. The only thing that, that made me think of next, though, was as this continues to grow, as the street continues to grow, we need to be very careful if we're gonna place a, an arch for vehicles to come through, is where does property begin now? Because the success of this property is, how far north does it go?
I think that, that all depends on what gets built there. It, it really truly does, and I think that, you know, this is just, to me, a net, another natural progression in what, you know, really Mike and Dave envisioned for that block to be. And, you know, it, it started out like this and it's just gonna keep going. That's, that's the hope. Nick, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Ellen. I just wanted to add, for those that are kind of concerned or, or against it, since COVID hit and, and our mantra has been to be agile, and we have done a, a variety of different things and we continue to pivot, to try to make things better, and I would suggest that we continue to pivot or be agile moving forward and see the results and continue down this path of looking at how we can improve business on River Street.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm very active in downtown and talk to a lot of people, and I've seen River Street these last few years during COVID and how many people come down there, and I just love that. I am in support of moving this to one way, just because of what has been stated, that we, as a city, get control of this and we can now do what we want with closing the street off. off and take down those awful barricades. But I just want to continue as a city and as our city council and staff that we continue being flexible and listening to the community and those businesses and realizing that this is a very active spot in our downtown that still has a lot of potential, potential for business growth and potential for community to come and get out of their homes and be together. And so, let's not just stop with this, but let's continue to see how we can develop, not even just that North River Street, but other areas in our downtown, because I think this has some really exciting potential for our town.
So I think we need, since it's not an actionable item and we're not going to vote on it, I think we just need to give direction to the staff and think you know where we're going to go. Very good. Thank you. Push the button.
Craig wants to speak.
Craig, come on up.
My name is Craig Foltos and I have a business right around the corner. And I love the growth in this town and I'm all in favor of this. I'm a very visual person. It's, it's how I make my living is by seeing things and creating. My only, if there's a complaint with the city on this, is I'm just trying to understand what it's going to look like when I read in the paper. Okay, I get, because for a while, we were only going southbound on it. I get that gist. I was, I was talking to Jeff the other day when I was giving him a haircut and I said, I'm trying to understand what they're talking about with, I understand you can't turn left, but then they go, we're going to get rid of the barricades. Originally, when that was first designed, they were going to have these metal posts there that people couldn't do it. So when you're selling something to me, just show me a picture. I'm a lot, I can go, okay, I get that. Because I support, I love the farmer's market and the development. I mean, when I first came to Batavia to work 52 years ago downtown, where the parking deck is, that used to just be a gravel lot, you know, and it was just, people would park there and basically, occasionally people would live out of their cars in that area. So it's wonderful for me to see this development. I want to support it more. Just be, just be as visual as you can with it. Show me what you're doing, why I want to buy into this thing, okay? So anyway, I'm all in favor of it. I love the excitement that's coming. I've never seen so many small businesses come in Batavia. I love people coming from out of town. I love goofing off with the people from out of town. I have a sign that says organic gluten-free haircuts to make fun of it, and people come in, they buy shirts now with that on it, because it's just, it's a wonderful feel downtown. But just give me something to buy, you know, show me a picture of it so I can go, because people are going to come in my shop and they're going to talk about, some of those guys that were just here, we're going to talk about the flood and flood plain, and they're going to talk about this, and they're going, if I have a picture that I can believe in and I can go, hey, I'm all in with these guys, because I'm a pretty good cheerleader for you guys. So anyway.
We'll find your poster, we'll figure a way to get your picture, you can hang up in the front window.
Okay, I just like to look at it to describe it.
I know it's on the website, but.
Craig, think of it this way, it's directing everybody to your shop.
No, that's okay, I just want to see, I'm not, I'm totally for it. I just want to be able to, like, many years ago, I put flowers on the Wilson Street Bridge before we had this beautiful new bridge. I love that they put flowers on the barricades. I just want to, I want to sell it for you. I want to go, man, you're going to love this. And when I don't understand it and I work 100 feet from where it's going to be, I'm, and I try really to stay up on top of things, you know? Coming to these meetings are sad, because I remember 30 years ago, 20 years ago, you'd have the Beacon, the Tribune, the Daily Herald, and every other paper here. So we don't get this kind of connection. And strange as it may seem, I don't go to the website and look at this stuff all the time. I just, I like to see it in the newspaper, I pay a lot of money for those.
No, it isn't.
Well, and the other thing, just to let you know, so you can visualize this, is the walkway, instead of being at an angle going across the road, makes a straight 90 across Wilson Street now. So it's a shorter distance to get from one side of Wilson to the other, and it's truly much more protected when you get across Wilson.
Okay.
So that makes it better, and it's a real barrier that's enough space where we're going to have to do something to make it interesting, whether it's planners or whatever we put out there to block off that, what would have been northbound lane.
You know, I just have a real simple motto at my work, the more you make it nice, the more you can raise the price. So just keep making it nice. So thank you for your time, I know you got a lot to do, thank you.
Thanks for hanging out and waiting to talk to us, Craig.
Ryan, did you want to speak?
I guess so. Most restaurant people have a.
I'm Ryan Shaver, Miras and Sidecar Supper Club. Um, I guess, I guess it's me. So we just want to make sure, I guess, we want this one-way thing. And I just, I remember when we started talking about this, however many years ago, everything is like three years ago. What we're trying to do, this was an easier way to close the street, right? And we're still on that same page of things. Yeah, so now we can just drag that barricade down, and even if it's like, it makes everybody happier where we can, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, daytime, whatever, that can be open, and then we can drag that thing down and you say, we'll get a permit, but that means, well, we can have a permit for every Thursday to Sunday, right? And have still the festivities and doing the things. And I know everybody keeps talking about people from out of town coming in, and yeah, this is the thing that like Geneva, St. Charles, and Aurora people are like, this is crazy, we don't have this. So, um, I guess there's just more, as far as like the lights and the tables and details and things, this is probably not the time to discuss all of those things, but I suppose.
We'll have time to plan that out, we still have to get it built.
Yeah, right. So as far as, I guess, pardon me, everyone that I'm like speaking for just wants to make sure, you know, the intent is still to be able to have, call it trivia night through Bluegrass on Sunday, and that can still very much be a thing that we're, that we're doing.
I think a change will be that there won't be as much space for, we don't intend to have a public outdoor dining area, but if individual businesses want to expand their own patio areas, we will continue to, you know, like we do with Sidecar right now, if you wanted to expand that, then we can talk about expanding that.
So as far as like the street being one-way is concerned, would that open up, is it going, because I know you can see a lot of stuff on there, but not all the way up the street? Would the whole street be, okay, well, you can only, it's one way, you can only drive over here, right? And then maybe?
Don't, correct me if I'm wrong, engineering, that it isn't like going to be the, the westernmost lane, it will be more toward the middle of that, that road-ish, right? Okay, the westernmost lane is primarily where.
If there were, when we do pull that barricade across, right, and now it's closed, you'd still run into the same, obviously, we have to be able to have emergency vehicles down the middle, like how we had it this year with the tables, they're all to the sides, right? Nothing's in the middle of the street.
Right.
So if we, wherever those tables exist and are stored somewhere, when it's time to, you know, do the River Street party, we just pull those out and then there we are, sort of, sort of deal?
Yes.
Does that make sense? Or?
I, I don't think, I think the tables are going to stay where the tables are, we're not going to be moving tables, if it's just an evening closure.
Right.
But we are going to have more tables than we need. So that's another thing, is that we'll work with those businesses to.
Going to have to find somebody to rent, borrow those tables, right?
Maybe.
Okay, sure. And then, I mean, we have plenty of people just bringing their own tables anyway, so that would still be totally an okay thing.
And one of.
Bring your.
C, B, Y, O, T.
Yeah, just a very like Ravinia thing, you know, you can bring your stuff, do your, have your picnic in the street.
And one of the things that we always talked about with River Street was, I have no problem closing it down pretty much anytime there's something planned to happen.
Right.
So if there's programming or something you guys have, every week you have a trivia night, every week you have Bluegrass night, whatever it is, as long as those are there and there's something going on there, and there's a reason for that street to be closed, and there's a benefit to the businesses and the community, we're going to make sure we figure out how to make that happen. Because I think that's the important part, is that we have that resource, we need to use it and we need to allow people to use it.
Right. And then, yeah, use it better during the day too. If that one-way traffic makes sense for other businesses that are doing much more than we're obviously doing during the daytime, then yes, then it helps everybody, which is what we all want, right?
But the retail businesses have it open during the day.
Absolutely.
And the other businesses have it closed and full at night.
Yes. Okay.
I just have to give you a compliment, Ryan. I know that when COVID happened and we were all trying to pivot and figure out what to do and open the street, close the street, programming, no programming, you guys, you know, came up with some phenomenal programming that has like carried on year after year and it's like made it become a community event almost. Like Thursday nights are absolutely crazy, it's, it's ridiculous how crazy you guys have made that street on a Thursday night.
Yeah.
Like, and people look forward to it. So thank you so much for putting that extra work, putting that extra, just putting that extra work into it and bringing the community together.
I mean, thank you for allowing us to do that, really. I mean, it, we had always had trivia, but it's, you know, seven teams inside.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, it turns out that last year, we had a night with 42 teams.
Right.
I mean, yeah, you're right, people look forward to it, and a lot of those people, like, that's their night, that's what they do, and they get together and it's all the same people, it's the same community, it's the same families.
And you grew with that, so, you know, thank you for doing that. I mean, people come in and they're going, we're going to Batavia on Thursday night, because it's so much fun. I mean, you got people watching and it's.
Now you can sit upstairs at the bar at Miras and watch all the.
Right.
It's better than TV over there.
Absolutely. So, yeah, so thank you. You guys have done a phenomenal job with your programming.
Oh, great. Anybody? Yeah.
Today, obviously, the granite planters, the concrete flower boxes, the concrete benches, those are all things that don't move, and they've all been set out there today in the context of two-way traffic. Where you can't move the granite planters, the tree planters, obviously, those are fixed. But the flower boxes and the benches can now be rearranged to, again, to another spot where they're not going to move, but in the context of one-way traffic, and therefore freeing up space in areas, you know, where we want to free up space. Council has already given us direction, and we haven't done it yet because we haven't gotten to this stage, but now that we are to this stage, Police, Fire, Public Works, and the North River Street businesses and Main Street are all going to have fun one day out there, walking up and down the street, figuring out, where do we put this flower box? Where do we put this concrete bench? In order to create a plan that allows Public Works to still reach the lift station, allows the ambulance to still reach the lower parking lot, but allows them to do trivia night. We all just have to have that conversation out there, which just hasn't happened yet, so.
It's cold.
Right, yeah.
It's coming.
But that's the thing is, is we're all ready to get it to that table and sit down and figure out how to do that. So I think that's the best benefit of it. Okay. Good news. Thank you, thanks for coming down.
Alan, can I ask one quick question?
Yep.
Didn't we approve earlier this year, last year, on the cantenary lighting for River Street? Gary, you give enough, did you?
We did, actually. So this year, it's actually shifted from being, the civil engineers have shed that project, even though they didn't know they had that project, over the electrical engineers, because we're having lighting controller problems out there. Anyone who's on that street knows that we're having street lighting issues. So the whole lighting controller system really needs to be redone now, which is now an electrical engineering problem. And I said, well, you're working on that, you're now going to work on the cantenary lighting. So yes, the cantenary lighting will be in design in '23 and construction in '24.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Following up on that, are there room for the barrel lighting that we've currently had, or will that be a thing? Those are going to disappear. So this year in '23, lighting will be limited? Is that? Yeah.
Could maybe.
Yeah, why can't we do it in '23 when it's in design? And then? Even, maybe just segmented into the pedestrian areas then? Because those were.
It may be something that can be surplus, perhaps we can surplus it for a business to use?
You all know my opinion of those barrels.
I know.
I love them.
I'm the only person who doesn't like barrels. But no, we, Alderman, back to your point, we're only going to have the pedestrian areas because there will be no traffic going down the street on like 20, 20, 21 and 22 where there was no traffic on the street, and we had the barrels all set up to form quasi-cantenary lighting. That is just going to be different in '23 because we'll now have cars there. Even if they close off the street for an event, they'd have to roll out the barrels every time in order to set them up.
Weren't vehicles still going down, though, the street occasionally, like garbage trucks and residential people?
Well, but that's because the lights are set up by the barricade, yeah. There are, there are vehicles that go down there, and I think even El Taco Grande comes in there every day, but it's not, you're not running.
Not ideal.
Yeah, you're not running trucks through there.
I would like to.
We have to plan for the trucks to go through there.
I would like the conversation as you're putting planners to maybe talk about potential lighting with the barrels for this year for them.
I, I will only push back and say, I don't want to have things that are fixed be dictated by barrels, but we're only going to be there for one year and then we're going to go onto a permanent system.
But it provides lighting?
I hate to put a planner box out someplace because this is where the barrel fits and then we have to go back and change the plan a year later.
But maybe that could be like, everything gets put in and then the lighting be put in, because I think it'll help provide some lighting and it's, it may help with kind of directing the people on where they can drive down the road. And maybe that's what they need for the first year as we do this, is a little bit of assistance to, this is almost like the driving lane.
That would be to Alderman Beck's point then, and the barrels would be on the pedestrian aspects of it. If you're a driver, you're seeing them on the, on both sides of.
I think you and Abby.
But I think that's what it was like.
I think you and Abby should be at the meeting when they have Main Street and the businesses and staff out there.
You can represent the wooden barrel committee.
Yeah, you, you, you guys can show up for that and figure, and figure that out.
I'm the one person that voted no for the permanent, because I love the barrel, but.
Brian, you need to use the microphone, I'm sorry.
With the barrels before, cantenary lighting, we're talking about doing from the tops of buildings, right over the whole street?
Into the sides.
Sides.
But yes. We're going to have our own pole system.
If we're not going to use the barrels, then when we get everything settled, when we're walking up and down the street, doing the things, and then we decide this is where everything's going to be, could we, I mean, we, the barrels are just going to go away, and if we're going to be able to extend patios further, then could we just, you know, we could use the barrels this year, they could run on our own power.
We can have all of it be part of the conversation.
That's what I mean.
Not eliminated.
Better time.
Okay. You guys have a great conversation about that one.
It's not going to be B-Y-O-T, B-Y.
Bring your, bring your own barrel.
Yeah. You're going to see people out there. Right. You're going to be out there with like candles and.
We still have a few more things to go through here and I need to go home, so. Let's move on to item number 11, which is Resolution 2305-R authorizing execution of construction engineering service agreement with federal participation for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements with V3 companies.
We've really got five.
Well, yeah, these, this, this whole next five of these, I guess, are, are all related for the Prairie and Wilson intersection and the railroad setup, so.
Thank you so much.
Mike, you want to start it, or you want to just go right to?
Yeah, it's just, this project's been on the books for a long time, we've been working on this, and I'm looking forward to finally starting and get this done. As Alan says, the next five resolutions, all which need to be approved before IDOT review in April. Rahat?
Yeah, thank you. So last time, when I was here, I was crying wolf that this project may not happen, because[1720.94] we were having pretty lengthy discussion with ICC and BNSF about getting can delivers and traffic signal and all that stuff. After nine long months of coordination, lot of hours, almost on a weekly basis with ICC and BNSF, we were able to get a hearing with, from ICC, where BNSF representative and city representatives were present. And ICC finally gave an order that seems like acceptable by both ICC staff and BNSF parties. So, we are now at a point where we are submitting our, or we have already submitted our final plans to IDOT for their review and approval. But as you know, there are quite a few things that we have to also submit to IDOT. The first one is the 23005 is a construction engineering services. We don't do these projects every day, so we hire, that's why we hire a construction engineer who do it every day. They are very good at it. There are a lot of paperwork that needs to be submitted, a lot of paperwork needs to be sorted out and close the project out with IDOT. That's why we hire a consultant. V3 was selected through a, we call it QBS process, or quality-based selection process. It's a federal process. Whenever you have federal funding, you have to follow that process, which is, we ask the consultants to submit a team, then we rank the team based on their experiences and other criterias, and then we negotiate a scope with them. So, we tell them, "Okay, this is the project. Tell us your scope." We negotiate the scope. Then we negotiate hours with them, saying how much that total scope is going to take. Once you negotiate the hours, you are all set, then they just put the dollar amount next to the hours. And that's how the QBS process works. Typically, we, for our city-funded projects, we ask them to submit their qualification and also a cost, and we do a quality-based adjusted cost. Whoever is the best qualified for the lowest cost is the one we choose. In this case, it's the best quality. You don't look at the dollar amount. So, V3 was selected through that process. The total cost proposal by V3 is, if I can see the, it's $449,000, sorry, sorry, $448,016. Out of that, some money is coming from federal government, some are city. The share is $138,880 from federal. Batavia's share is $309,000. You may ask, why is Batavia's share is higher? It's because we have water main portion that's getting done with this project that has to be all city-funded. The federal projects don't pay for the water main portion of it. So, that's why our share is higher than the federal share. So, the resolution that you have in front of you is to approve a construction engineering services with V3. I also want to add something to it, and it's in the memo. So, now that we have gone past the BNSF and ICC huddle, the last remaining couple of, I think, last remaining thing is to getting right-of-way from all the property owners that's at close to that intersection. We have got the right-of-way and temporary easement from most of them. We have two holdouts. I have been calling both of them. We are not supposed to negotiate. At this point, I cannot, or the city staff cannot negotiate with them. The only person who can negotiate is, we have a right-of-way negotiator through the consultant. But both of these property owners have been pretty unresponsive. So, that's the critical path for us because we have to get all that, those two property owners sign, agree, and submit the paperwork to IDOT. Truthfully speaking, if they don't sign, the project will die. So, I'm probably here pleading with you that if you have any string to pull, just to tell them that response, you know? I mean, typically, when we offer somebody saying, "Okay, we are offering you $20,000 for the right-of-way that we need from you," they typically will come back and say, "No, give me $100,000." And then the negotiation process starts. In this case, these property owners, we have met with them last year in April, explained the project, you know, there was back and forth a little bit, then all of a sudden, it's like, no response. I'll be honest, I just got a text from one of the property owners saying, "I have been sick. I can't talk to you." You know, he can text me. But this is something I cannot text. You know, I mean, I will text to her saying, you know, "Hope you recover soon, and next week, let's touch base when you feel better." But they have been pretty unresponsive, and it's kind of alarming because we started the process almost eight, nine months ago, and we are at the last minute now. So, that's where we are. So, even though we will be, hopefully, you will be passing or recommending all this to the city council, but I just want to put it out there to you two also. I'll be, I can point out which property owners. One is the Parkinson's. That, we met with him, we showed him what we want from him. He'll still be compliant, you know, with the approval that city council provided him. And also, the property owner to just south of that, which is at the corner of southeast corner of Wilson and Brady, that's the Mr. Wilson house. So, those are the two properties that have been pretty unresponsive. So, if you have any string to pull, please do so because we need help.
Let me just make a couple of comments here. This is going to be partially funded by FAU money, Federal Agent Urban Systems, which comes out of Chicago, of which, as most of you know, I serve as chairman of that group in Chicago, so I get to talk to all these cities about what their projects are and what's going on. What has just been explained to us here is, it's kind of common in the region. I mean, everybody thinks they can get, squeeze a little bit more out of this whole thing and everything else. This has been, this project's been thought of and proposed for a long time, and I got to commend our engineering staff for finally getting it all organized and getting it ready. I have a memory back in my early days when, in my wild and crazy youth, as my mother used to describe it, I was on the volunteer fire department. And I remember one night, I was, responded over there, and Alderman Beck's father, who was then on the Batavia Fire Department, we had three senior citizens in a car that got hit by a train at that intersection. And we didn't have all the great extrication equipment we now have, and so we used what they call a halogen tool and an axe to break open the doors to get these three people out. And I remember Dick Ernstson and I and a couple others took great pride in the fact that we got all three of these people out of that car alive, and they all had to go to the hospital, but they all survived the accident. But that was a real mango thing, and it left an imprint on me about the need to have this thing taken care of. So, when you get this money, and this federal money comes in, you can appreciate there's a lot of politics get involved in Chicago in this. So, many years ago, we made a decision based on the demographics in each one of the sub-councils, there's 12 of us, 12 sub-councils, each one, in our case, it's Kane and Kendall County, and then there's one for Will and DuPage and everybody else, that we would create this formula based on population and arterial road miles and other conditions. And then based on the formula, the money, whatever it is, because it changes every year from the federal government, would be then distributed to the 13 sub-regional councils, including the city of Chicago. So, in Kane County, you got to get yourself in the line here. So, I think we put this in the line maybe 10, 12 years ago. I mean, it's been a long time coming. And as we gradually, as other projects get, we've had a big project going up in Carpenter's Ville that's taken a lot of the money, but that's kind of over with now. The big one right at the moment is Geneva's trying to get East State Street redone, and so they're getting a big share of the money at the moment. And fortunately, Batavia and a couple others are kind of next in line. So, I think what we're asking for, we got the money in Chicago to give us if we can get ourselves together here. So, if any of you can talk to either one of these folks that are still the holdouts and get us, we need to, you know, move on with this because it, the word, the way it works in there, if you don't get the easements, you know, we just say, "Okay, take your project and put it back in the list, and we'll take the next people on the list." So, we couldn't lose this money if we don't act properly, and I just want everybody to know that. I mean, I've talked to Mr. Park a couple of times, and I get the impression he's not opposing this as much as...
Actually, I just want to be clear, it's not Mr. Park. He doesn't own the property. It's another owner. I can't remember his name.
I think Mr. Wigan, is his name is.
Okay.
And he, my last take is he has moved south, like Texas or somewhere.
Yeah, he has.
But, I mean, the tenant cannot really sign the paper. It's the property owner. And we have reached out to his legal counsel. Legal counsel got back to us saying, "He's not even answering my call." So, that's kind of tough, right? I mean, so legal counsel can do anything without his direction. But we met with the property owner, Mr. Wigan, last year.
Yes.
Like in April. I remember it was a rainy, cold day.
I do, too.
And we, you know, he looked, he, we explained everything to him. He looked satisfied. He was satisfied. We had a few communications with him, but then MIA. So, if you do talk to him, please tell him that...
I know Mr. Wigan very well. He used to represent Kane County on the Kane County Board for...
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, at least tell us what he wants. I mean, I'm not saying that we are going to sign the wall to him, but at least tell us.
He went off to North or South Carolina or someplace.
I don't know. Somewhere south.
Yeah, he's long gone.
And what was the other property?
It's the Mr. Wilson's house, which is the southeast corner.
The blue house across the street.
Yes.
I mean, it's real small pieces of property, I think, that are involved in it.
The, yes, Parkinson's is like really, really small.
Right.
It's more like actually temporary easement because when we are going to take out the sidewalk and put it back, we need a couple of feet into...
Do it.
I mean, he, his stuff is already in the city right-of-way.
Right.
So, we really need temporary easement from him, but the south property, Mr. Wilson's house, is where we need right-of-way because the road gets wider.
Right over there.
Over there. So, and the sidewalk shifts a little bit and makes a 90-degree with the railroad tracks. That's why we need a property from that side.
Well, IDOT and CMAP have spent enough time on this. They'd like to get this done because they've committed a lot of time to get it. Again, in the context of projects, this is a very, very small project in comparison to everything else that's flying around it in there. So, we'd like to get it taken care of, so.
And in addition to, in addition to the federal money, you see that we got Great Crossing Protection Fund.
Yes.
A GCPF, which is state money to, which goes directly to BNSF to install the gates and can deliver and all that. So, the fight was really about hanging the traffic signals in the railroad can deliver because railroad is going to put a can deliver, and the ICC wanted the traffic signal to be on that can deliver. That was the fight for nine months. Did cost a lot of time and money, so.
Okay.
Just about there.
Anything else?
I mean, we are very excited to move forward, but, you know, this is something that keeps us awake at night. Because, you know, you fights, you fight for such a long time, and at the end, you want to win.
To get one or two little property owners to hang you up on that is not fun.
All right. With that, I'd like to make a motion to move to City Council Resolution 23005-R, authorizing execution of the construction engineering services agreement with V3 for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvement project for an amount not to exceed $448,016.
Second?
Motion by Rosado, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Zofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Ian Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 14 to 0.
Thank you.
And then moving forward, I'd like to recommend to City Council Resolution 2306, 006-R, authorizing execution of the local agency agreement with IDOT for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvement project.
This is, sorry.
Okay.
This is just to show our commitment to IDOT that we are going to fund our portion, and we have fund set aside, and we have budgeted this money in our budget this year. So, if bid comes out to be lower than this, than budget, then everything is good to go. If it comes out higher, obviously, at that time, the IDOT will come back to us and say, "Are you okay with that?" If it is within a tolerance limit, we'll most likely say yes. But if it is not within tolerance limit, which is 5 to 10%, then we'll probably come back to you, and we can rebudget this money or extra money next year. I forgot to mention that this is going to be actually a two-year project because it's going to be an April letting, and typically takes 60 to 90 days for the city, for the state to sign the contract and the contract to start moving. So, the earliest that we will see anybody start working here is in middle of July. So, right after July 4th, maybe the construction will start. We anticipate that only thing that will be done is the water main construction, and also, hopefully, the railroad construction by end of next year, this year, this year. And then we will go in a winter shutdown, and next year is going to be all the removal of sidewalk and curb and all other stuff, like real construction, construction. So, it's a two-year project, so we'll have opportunity to, if we, we don't know how this construction cost is going to be. If we have to budget more, we can do that next year.
We had a motion and a second.
A second.
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Zofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Ian Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 14 to 0.
Want to say anything about them?
The next one is, it's, BNSF is going to do most of the construction for their facilities, but our contractor will need to do construction as far as sidewalk and some other within their right-of-way, if you want to say. And this construction and maintenance agreement speaks about that. The city attorney has looked at it. We have looked at it, that the maintenance of BNSF equipment will be their responsibility, you know, as long as those items are there. The sidewalk and all other items will be our responsibility. It clearly says that, and it kind of says that we'll pay them when they are done constructing their stuff, and we'll get the reimbursement from the state. So, that's what this agreement is about.
And that's still under attorney review?
So, all these agreements have gone back and forth, and the last one that you guys looked at, that's a pretty standard agreement. It is, we send it to IDOT for their final review. There will be no substantial changes. They might say, "You missed this, you know, 1.4 million, 219 instead of 18," something like that, like very minimum. This one has gone back and forth with BNSF. We, they have, in general, they have agreed to our changes. So, we don't expect any, like, substantial changes which will, you know, require your action again. So, we are hoping that the final one that they will send back to us will be able to just get signed by mayor and good to go.
Any discussion? Yes. And I'd like to move to City Council Resolution 2315-R, authorizing execution of construction and maintenance agreement with BNSF for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements project.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Malley. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Zofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Ian Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
You have twenty-three sixteen, Rahat.
Okay, so that one establishes that the new, uh, sidewalk and all other city facilities will be within the BNSF easement area. Another thing that we have found out throughout our, uh, process is that the Prairie Street currently doesn't have any easement over the railroad. So, the street is there, but whenever it was built. So, this is to clean up that portion also, that now we are going to establish an easement for Prairie Street over the railroad tracks. So, um, we needed to do that for the sidewalk anyway.
Right.
Um, so, this is, this talks about that.
Any discussion? Then I'll make a motion to move to City Council Resolution twenty-three sixteen R, authorizing execution of the grade crossing and sidewalk easement agreement with BNSF for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street Intersection Improvements Project.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Malley. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Ian Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
Okay, and then I think Resolution twenty-three seventeen R involves some increased costs that we have to cover.
Yeah, so, it's my pet peeve. I always knew that federal government and state government is all about creating jobs. ICC is part of that. I didn't know BNSF is part of that also. So, which was supposed to be, you know, we, we assumed that it will take a simple submittal and ICC hearing within a month or two, took us nine months, and there were a lot of, um, back and forth between BN- BNSF and ICC, and we were caught in that crossfire. So, they wanted lot of exhibits, as I said. There were meetings every week, three hours, on Friday or on Thursday, starting at three o'clock and went up to like five thirty, six PM. I'm not kidding when I say that. So, um, so it was a lot of hours that nobody anticipated. We did not anticipate, uh, the consultant didn't anticipate, and it all happened last year. So, we knew that there will be a change order. So, we budgeted this money, um, in, in twenty twenty-three budget, uh, anticipating that there will be a change order. They have submitted this change order, but we waited till, uh, budget got passed, and we wanted to bring everything together. So, they, they have already spent the time and money, uh, the consultant did, but we haven't paid them. So, this is to, um, pay, this, this change order to pay for all the time and, and, uh, money that they have spent, um, so far, extra for this project. And, and I don't know whether it's the zoom or whatever, the, the judge could not figure out the drawing, so we had to do the same drawing. I mean, some of the things engineers do look at and, and just come to them, you know, but for judge, it was like really hard. So, it's the same drawing, we, we had to modify it six times. I mean, it was pretty frustrating. We tried to explain why the dotted line, what the dash line means, but he didn't like the dotted line, so next one round, we had to delete the dotted line. Uh, I mean, we got a good chuckle out of it, but it did, it, it was very, very tough. Um, but this is, this is a change order for lot of changes that BNSF and ICC, um, made us, uh, do. I mean, BNSF, even when, as far as they said, you want to hang your traffic signal on my can deliver, prove that the can deliver is not going to fall down, even though they have done similar project, like fifty times, in the state of Illinois. So, we had to go get a, get the, uh, manufacturer and, and pay them to come up with that design to show that, yes, it's not going to fall down. So, it, it's just, um, made it go around for us, but, uh, nothing that we anticipated, and that's why the change order is in front of you.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll make a mo- motion that we move to City Council Resolution twenty-three seventeen R, authorizing execution of supplement two at Tran Systems for Design Services on Prairie Street and Wilson Street Intersection Improvements.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Malley. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Ian Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, up next is item sixteen, which is Resolution twenty-three thirteen R, authorizing task order number ten A with Baxter and Woodman for GIS GPS Stormwater Utility Field Data Collection for seventy-five thousand dollars. Alan, Rosado?
Yes, this is, we're updating our inventory on our entire stormwater system to complete our GIS, and I'll let Andrea take it from here.
Yeah, so, um, we started a couple of years ago doing actual collection of the stormwater structures out there, which was the last utility that actually had information entered into the GIS system. Um, with this work, we are doing the full budgeted amount, and depending on what they find out there, we may, um, have to cut some areas that we have proposed, but, um, look forward to adding a majority of the southwest corner of town, south of Wilson, and from the river to the corporate limits. So, um, it has come in handy, even just the little bit that we've gotten, having some pictures collected, and it's, um, a much-needed improvement for doing some of our work a little bit more efficiently.
I believe we've been working on this a while too, right?
Yeah, this is, this will be the third year.
Any discussion? I'll make a motion then that we move to City Council Resolution twenty-three thirteen R, authorizing task order ten A with Baxter and Woodman, Inc., for the GIS GPS Stormwater Utility Field Data Collection in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand, which includes three percent contingency amount.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Malley. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Ian Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Up next is, uh, item seventeen, Resolution twenty-three fourteen R, approving resolution accepting public improvements at Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers.
Yes, I believe this is just a release of a cash maintenance bond. Rahat?
Yes. Um, so, part of the Raising Cane development, they have put in some public utilities and sidewalk. Um, you have seen this before. Uh, city council has to take a formal action to accept any, uh, public utilities, uh, and sidewalk that have been constructed, and the, it has been constructed for over a year, so the maintenance period is over. At this point, we will typically release their, uh, letter of credit or cash bond. In this case, they have given us cash, so we'll be just writing a check back to them.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll make a motion that we move to City Council Resolution twenty-three fourteen R, approving a resolution accepting public improvements at Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Malley. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Ian Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, up next is item eighteen, which is Resolution twenty-three zero zero one R, approval of telecommunications franchise agreement with Level Three Communications. Alderman Saron?
Yes, thank you, Alan. Uh, Level Three Communications currently has some fiber infrastructure in Batavia, but they need a new, uh, agreement, because they are requiring that they are able to install more and to, all some to serve customers here, which is, uh, would be new for them. So, Gary, do you want to expound on it?
Again, this is a telecommunications franchise agreement, so this is a franchise agreement that allows them to be in our right of ways, and as Alderman Saron just said, actually to serve customers within the city. And it's again for telecommunications purposes under the state law. It does not allow for entertainment services. Um, so it's for things like data, uh, but not television. Now, state law is lagged behind technology, obviously, because nowadays you stream over, over the data, but state law is what the state law is. So, they are not allowed under this franchise agreement to provide services other than telecommunications services. Um, and they are required to notify us if they do intend to lease or sign their, their fibers to other companies who may want to provide other services, uh, besides just telecommunications services. Um, so yeah, we are recommending approval of a, uh, telecommunications franchise agreement with Level Three. Uh, it will help to promote a competitive marketplace amongst the fiber providers that are now in town.
Gary, I, I like the competitive, uh, side of it and open market. Is there, is there downside to this at all?
Well, the downside from the city's perspective, and it's something we can't stop, because they're public utilities, that is just that our right of ways fell off, because we have, we have an abundance of utilities in our right of way. Uh, but again, they are all serving a public purpose, and we have a public right of way for public use, and therefore we're allowed, or they're allowed to use.
Well, that makes this vote, uh, kind of moot, but let's, uh, let's go through it. Anybody else have anything to add or comment on this?
Abby?
I had a question. I, when I came on, we were like right at midpoint of the Metronet installations. Is this another installation to that degree? Okay.
No, it's not to that degree. So, Metronet went to every home in town, and Metronet falls under the cable, uh, agreement, the cable laws in the state of Illinois.
They are entertainment.
They are entertainment. Exactly, yeah. Yeah, so two different things. I would envision Level Three from what their business model is. Level Three will be going to, um, you know, the, the industrial park, to service, to service businesses in town.
Gary, what are the competitors then to Level Three?
Uh, right now, MCI Metro is in town, um, and MCI Metro came in town with the intention of doing five G, uh, although I don't think they've ever deployed five G in town for using their fiber network. And Metronet is a competitor of theirs, Comcast is a competitor of theirs, AT&amp;T is a competitor of theirs.
Lot of crossover, huh?
Yep.
You know, Abby brought up a good point. Gary, um, in, in lieu of what we've witnessed with Metronet, uh, is there any protections in there? Is if they're, uh, if they're digging up our parkways, that they will leave them in good condition afterwards?
Well, that, that is part of what the telecommunications franchise agreement, um, addresses, is that they have to leave them in a good workman-like condition after they, after they, and that's the same thing that we put on all of our, um, franchisees within our parkways, yes.
Is there, uh, repercussions outlined, or, uh, a, 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 a way to get after them, or, I mean, Metronet was, while they fetched a lot of complaints, they, they always went out afterwards, I guess, to fix up, but how do we ensure that?
Trying to find, um, that section in the, uh... Because it does speak to construction and maintenance, and company agrees to obtain all necessary permits and to perform restorations, and it doesn't say that we can require a permit from them, and, um, that's how we do it right now today with some companies, Alderman, is through the permit process, they are required to post a bond with the city, and that allows us the back, the backstop, so to speak, so that we do have funds there, should they not restore a right of way.
Okay, awesome. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Yeah. How, how much is the bond by chance?
It varies. It depends on what, what, we have a blanket bond, and Jeff Albertson's not here tonight, but we have a blanket bond that some of the companies use. Oh, there he is, I'm sorry.
[laughing]
You can, you can answer that question, Jeff. What's the blanket bond?
Blanket bond is, it's ten thousand or...
So, ten thousand or one, one and a half, one times, one and a half times the project? And again, that is intended to be for restoration. That's really all it is. We're not building anything with that money, we're just restoring something.
Okay. With that, I will, uh, make a motion to recommend to City Council Resolution twenty-three dash zero zero one dash R, approving a telecommunications franchise agreement with Level Three Communication.
Second.
Who is that second? Tony?
Malley.
Tony.
Okay, roll call, please.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ian Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next is Resolution twenty-three oh oh two R, approving agreement in lieu of code violation with Suncast and Vista Investments Incorporated. Alderman Saron?
Yes, the, uh, quintessential ask for, ask permission. Uh, I'll just turn this over to Gary to, to get a little color on.
So, in March of twenty twenty-one, when Suncast was beginning the, their process, um, well within their process of expanding their manufacturing, they needed to install more bulk handling for the plastic pellets which come off the rail cars. And so, this is the Suncast Lane facility, and it's on the west side of the Suncast Lane facility where their rail spur is. And they unload pellets off those rail cars into silos, and then from the silos, it goes into the manufacturing facility. And as part of their silos, there's concrete pads that support everything, and there is also piping which pellets flow through. And the piping and the pads were all supposed to be a set distance, nine and a half feet minimum, away from the edge of the utility easement, which exists out there, and within that utility easement is the city water main. And unfortunately, during the course of construction, they encroached closer to the utility easement, and, um, everyone agrees, both parties agree, that, that the city would have a right, uh, to force, uh, them to comply with the approved plans and to relocate their facilities. Um, they are in violation, but we also agree that, you know, there's, there's some, uh, reasonableness and as to how we can come to a resolution. Um, the city may very well have to in the future hire a contractor to perform maintenance on that water main because of the constrained width. And if we have to do that, the city doesn't want to be on the hook for those calls. So, that's the purpose of this agreement, is to say, we acknowledge that the, the pad and the piping is closer than it should have been. As a result of that, the city may incur additional cost at some point in the future, and if the city does incur those costs, Suncast, you're going to be responsible. And in, in return for that, we'll allow you to keep your piping and, and your pad where it is. And so, that's the gist of the agreement. The agreement's gone back and forth between our attorney and Suncast's attorney, and this is the final version that everyone has agreed to.
Great. Way down. Good resolution. Uh, anybody have any comments or questions? With that, I will, uh, make a recommendation to City Council, approval of Resolution twenty-three dash zero zero two dash R, approving agreement in lieu of code violation with Suncast Corp. and Vista Investments.
Second.
Malley.
Roll call, please.
Saron?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?[1722.98]
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Le?
Aye.
Ian Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is item twenty, Resolution twenty-three twenty dash R authorizing execution of real estate contract purchase property needed for completing Phase Two A of the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. Alderman Chantet?
I'll take these these two together. Actually, it's important to make these adjustments because the next phase requires a larger footprint here, so we have to increase the size of the property by just a sliver, and we have to add the right of way to the property. So I would make a motion that we send twenty
Twenty-three twenty R?
Twenty R to Council for approval, so we can increase the footprint.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Cheapest property we've bought in a long time.
If they used to go for a buck, yeah, another ten buck. Clerk, roll call, please.
Who is the second?
I'm sorry.
Lehman, Alderman Lehman.
Thank you. Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Le?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ian Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
And then for twenty-three twenty-one, this is to acquire the easement. Would we approve that sentence to Council as well?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Le?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ian Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen to zero.
Thank you. Now we move on to project status.
Thank you. Just an update on a couple of projects today. I received email notice from Housing and Urban Development that we are a recipient of funding for moving the food pantry. And so staff in the food pantry have been working very closely together over the last, well, really, the last four or five years to identify a site for the permanent home for the food pantry, which has significantly outgrown its current location. But we're looking at several sites right now and also digesting all of the requirements that go along with accepting federal funding of this kind. It's the first of this type of grant that we have worked with before. One of the components will be an environmental review, the impact that this project will have depending upon the site. And so we've reached out to the environmental consultants that we've worked with on several other projects who we've been very happy with to see if they have expertise working on projects specifically like this. The other project that I wanted to provide you with an update is Housia Levine and the Downtown Plan. The consultants will be hosting a visioning workshop, and that is tomorrow evening at six o'clock P M at the Batavia Public Library. And you can go to our website to learn more about the Downtown Plan and what that process is. But it's another opportunity for the community to give their input input on what they would like to see in the future of our downtown. And that, oh, one other thing that I wanted to mention, and we'll be bringing this discussion to City Council, a future committee at the whole meeting, is that we continue to research options and opportunities for installing public washrooms in our downtown. It's been something that has been needed for a long time. We've met with the C F of the Park District, too. They too seem amenable to partnering with us, and we'll be bringing some ideas back to you to to see engage your interest, but it would be a good use of TIF funds. So look for that on a future agenda.
Can anybody have any questions for Laura? Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you. With the public washroom note, would there be water bottle filling stations included with installation of new washrooms?
I can add that as a note.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, Leo?
Um, a question that will probably be best suited for a future COW discussion. Does the city of Batavia have licensing for street performers, also known as busking?
You know, that has come up in the past and been considered. At that time, they determined not to require a permit for busking, as I remember. Is that correct, Jeff? Can you? Yeah, my recollection is that we don't.
We don't require a permit, so people may do it?
Yes.
They can just show up on a corner and street perform?
Nothing prevents it as long as they're not blocking the people's ability to use the public sidewalk.
Okay, so I'm I'm just asking for like, you know, as we head into summer, and I know there's been some interest. So if somebody wants to show up like at the corner of Shimway and Wilson and perform, there's nothing stopping them from doing that?
Depends on how good they are. If it stops traffic because it's somebody famous, that would be problematic.
Well, yes, but I mean, I this is an actual question that has come up, and so there is, we just have no permits or or?
Today, we don't. So it would be a policy decision. If that's something that you want to control, then we could look at what other communities do in terms of regulating that activity and bring you some options.
Do you know that during the winter, the one studio has dancers and they set out families to sit, and I know one year I sat and enjoyed? I know a lot of businesses do things like that. I think this is more of like public space that we that it's totally fine if people do that. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any others? Abby?
I have an update. My husband is no longer going to be pursuing a liquor license, so I will be able to rejoin full meetings. And if anyone wants to talk about gaming, I've got a couple of years of comments backed up.
No, we're we can put that one on hold. Dan?
I just I just had a very brief other. Twenty twenty-three was a very weird, difficult year for me. I just want to say thank you to staff and to my colleagues around the table. I have had a Woodrow Wilson moment staying home on Zoom meetings, recovery from my neck surgery. It was problematic for me to look people in the eyes when I didn't have full nerves in my face. Like I could finally talk again without slurring my speech, and it's so good to be back at this table. So thank you, everybody, for your for your patience.
Nice to have you back.
Curie, turn up. Use the microphone.
I know it's late. We all want to go home, but this is a really important item, and I actually have good news to share. Couple of weeks ago, you'll recall probably in the news, a fire down in LaSalle at a company called Charis Chemical. Charis Chemical is a producer of a chemical that we use to remove radium from our water, and it's used by water systems throughout the Midwest as well as wastewater systems. And so literally, the water and wastewater industry was thrown into chaos because they are the largest supplier in the Midwest, and they really supplied, you know, vast majority of the industry. Their manufacturing process and their emergency backup storage were destroyed in the fire. So availability of this chemical was is going to be non-existent from this company for the foreseeable future. Tonight, Jeremy Barki sent me an email, and I I'm gonna, this is entirely Jeremy. Jeremy, from the beginning, as soon as he heard the news reports, literally started the process of reaching out. A hundred percent, Jeremy totally deserves all the credit for this. He has worked out costs, logistics, and analytical concerns, chemical concerns with a new supplier and has gained preferred status with that supplier because we were the first to inquire. And that supplier is going to take inquiries on a first come, first served basis. And so guaranteed, we are now guaranteed to be able to get this chemical for our water treatment system. Without the chemical, we probably would not, well, probably not, probably, there is no way we would have met federal standards for water quality because we couldn't control for the radium. So it's that critical. And again, Jeremy, a hundred percent, all his efforts, sends me this email tonight saying that he's able to do that. So I wanted to share that.
Great news.
Good way to end the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no others, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
Second.
By Beck, second by Sofa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, go home.
Good night.
Nine thirty-five, good.
So
No, actually.
As we were sitting here, I came across social media Aqua Viva's leaving for Naperville.
Yeah.